Hi Sarah, how are you?
Hi James, how you doing?
I'm good, thanks. Looks like we have another busy evening.
Just waiting for a couple more board members to join before I call the meeting door. Jim joining. Looks like I'm just looking for Catherine. Hi Jim. Well, I think I'll go ahead and get started. I think Catherine will be along. Shortly. It is 7:01 PM on Wednesday, May 25th, 2022. And I'll call the zoning Board of Appeals 40B meeting to order. This is a continued public hearing on the 40B application of Jeffrey Engler of SLB School Street LLC to be known as a sanctuary at Manchester by the Sea for a comprehensive permit under Mass General Laws, Chapter 40B, Sections 20 through 23. Construct 136 unit apartment complex for which the Mass Housing Finance Agency issued a project eligibility decision on September 16th, 2021 at School Street. Assessors map number 43, lot number 18 filed with the town clerk on September 27th, 2021. I'm Sarah Melish. I'm Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals. I have with me tonight James Mitchell, Sean Zahn, John Benares, Brian Solacy, Jim Dietrich, and I believe Catherine Howe will be joining.
Yes, I'm here.
Oh, and Catherine Howe. Thanks Catherine. The first item on the agenda is to review the engineering peer review. Mr. Cody, are you on and would you like to go over this with us?
Sure.
Thank you.
So I don't know, I guess, so we issued a letter to the board on May 20th.
Yes.
And just received comments this afternoon.
Yes.
In response to those, which obviously we haven't had a chance to thoroughly vet or review in any detail as of yet. So I guess the comments of, you know, the letter of the 20th may not, maybe no longer be valid. It may no longer be critical as, you know, they've potentially been addressed. But I guess at this time, we don't know. So I guess I'm not sure how you want to proceed. Just kind of want to, you know, kind of a brief overview of what was outstanding. And then I guess we can see where we go from there.
And I guess if you could just kind of highlight, you've made some recommendations with respect to conditions.
Okay.
If you could just kind of address those two, that would be helpful to us.
Sure. So I guess the one of the first things we'd noted is, you know, the sewer pumps. So in the most recent design, they've switched to a sewer pump station. Um, it's going to require some waivers based on its location in the setback. Again, we don't necessarily take any opposition, you know, to that waiver request. If it's amenable to the board. However, we know like this, the pump station is not fully designed. I guess, and nor would we expect it necessarily to be at this point. They provided a sample on design or, you know, so kind of some standard typical details of what the station, you know, would look like or how it would operate. And we're comfortable with those. Again, so as far as like a potential condition, obviously, as we, as it moves forward to through a building permit process, you know, the DPW and the building inspector would obviously thoroughly vet that design when it's, you know, available. Obviously after, after this process.
Okay.
I guess the same thing goes for the booster pump station related to the water. Again, with the, you know, with the elevation changes from School Street up to where this facility will be up on top of the hill. Again, there's a booster pump station that's proposed adjacent to the pump state, the sewer pump station. Again, would require a waiver for being in that setback area. Again, which we're not necessarily opposed to. But again, that, you know, booster pump station isn't designed fully. And again, you know, similar to the sewer pump station, we'd have to be, you know, vetted with DPW and, you know, available capacities and pressures and testing further into the process, you know, or further into the design process, not necessarily this process when the time comes. So again, that would be, you know, another condition that we would recommend. Another waiver they requested, or is for the potential for the sidewalk. And this being, you know, kind of tossed back and forth along the driveway. That additional impact in previous area would put them over the threshold of the 15% for the site. So again, they're requesting a waiver for that. And again, we don't necessarily take any opposition to that waiver. If it's, you know, if it's the preference of the board to have that sidewalk as opposed to not having. If, again, if they're gonna, if you're gonna want it, then you're gonna, you know, then the waiver makes sense. Because it's going to put them over that threshold. Um, I guess some other highlights. So regarding like the CMP that we've kind of been kicking around, you know, they did, the applicant has provided some information relative to the amount of earthwork that's going to be required on the site. The estimated, you know, it's, you know, it's 100,000 yards and it's, you know, 3,800 plus or minus trips, you know, truck trips, you know, 60, you know, I thought I had 60 or something a day for several months. So, and obviously, so obviously with, with the proximity to the highway. I mean, a lot of that traffic, it's not like it's going to be going through the center of town or anything. But it is still quite an impact. And again, we do recognize with the sensitivity to the vernal pools and the surrounding resource areas, that volume of earthwork, that, you know, some kind of CMP would be appropriate, or at least, you know, and the applicant has committed to providing that again during that building permit process to be reviewed at that time and outside this process. And again, it is, if it's amenable to the board, we're comfortable with that. But again, it's a potential condition. And then relative to some of the stormwater issues that we had noted. Again, you know, there's some inconsistencies with, you know, groundwater elevations and rainfall events and different things that, you know, I'm assuming, or we will see if the submission today is addressed at a later date. But again, it seems like they were kind of, they were moving in the right direction in good faith of, as far as, you know, trying to make the adjustments that we've requested. I mean, but from where we started to where we are now, we think it's a much more viable design than when, you know, again, we originally started, you know, the applicant has been receptive to the concerns that we've brought up. But there's just still were outstanding issues again as of the 20th, not necessarily after today's submission. But we'll have to, we'll have to look into that further when time allows. So I guess those were the, I guess those were the major things, or at least are conditions that I guess, you know, come to mind. I mean, there's other minor ones, you know, regarding signage and different things like that, that would seem to be, you know, more readily addressed on the kind of administrative level. It's not necessarily, you know, nuts and bolts engineering, but certainly available to answer any questions or concerns the board might have. Again, not being able to have, you know, thoroughly reviewed the latest submission provided this afternoon.
I guess one of my questions is you referenced the fact there's not a CMP, you know, obviously we're a small town. What would be logical for us to put into the conditions with respect to protecting the vernal pools during the construction?
Well, I guess, I mean, the, and I guess in my opinion, Well, I guess, I mean, the, and I guess in my opinion, as, I mean, the project's still going to have to go for the Conservation Commission to get the required permitting there. And that's when, and you know, as they're further along in that process, that's, we would, you know, potentially expect the Conservation Commission to raise those same concerns, and they could be addressed at that time. At the CMP, you know, as, you know, as, if a CMP is available then, or getting, you know, if there's some kind of draft or at least something to look at. So I guess as far as a condition for, you know, for this board would be that obviously that the, you know, the Conservation Commission's recommendations, conditions, you know, are all upheld relative to, you know, protecting of the vernal pools, et cetera.
Okay.
I guess is how, I guess is how we would recommend handling that because again, we still have to go to the Conservation Commission for the, for those work, for that work related to the vernal pools.
Even though the vernal pools aren't protected under the state?
Correct. No, this, yes, they're still going to have to, you know, they're, they're going to need an order of conditions.
Okay. Other board members, James Mitchell, do you have questions, concerns?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. Thank you, Sarah. Matt just covered several of the issues I was hoping to get some clarity on. But there were a couple others that I made notes of. And on page four, item three, determining, there's a request, the applicant document the adequate water pressure that will be available to service the project. So that's something I think we should look at. The, the next thing that was, came to mind for me on page seven, in section seven, is an observation that it does not appear that there's any accommodations for e-car parking and charging stations. I do think that's an important thing going forward for our community. So I'd like to hear more about that. On, on page eight, section 11, there's information regarding the electrical and telephone and data utility requirements. And there's a couple of contradictions there with respect to whether we have overhead wires or underground wires. And the applicant has said he has no objection to underground duct banks, but requests that the flexibility to provide overhead, if allowed by the utility, be provided. I would like to just personally see all underground utilities. I think for a project of this size and magnitude and construction budget, that would be appropriate. My question here is really one for the board. Can the ZBA board require underground utilities if the utility provider allows for overhead? So that's something I think needs a little clarity.
I mean, we, we can impose conditions on the comprehensive permit. So if we want to impose a condition that the utilities are underground, we can do that.
Again, it's, and that's, that's good to know. I just think it's something that should be discussed because that has a real visual impact, of course. And then the last two things. Section nine, page 15. I don't really understand with reference to the ponds what freeboard is and, you know, 100-year storm events. And the, the engineers are requesting that the applicant clarify the design intent of the infrastructure and revise the design accordingly. The applicant's response is using different data to determine his calculations. So I guess I would need more explanation there because I really, as a layperson, really don't understand all of that. And then when you get to section last one in section 11 regarding the diameter of pipes for stormwater management. The it has the same response, but using different calculations for determining the size of these pipes. So those, those are just areas where I was hoping to get a little more clarity. And that, that's all I got.
Mr. Cody, can you explain number nine and what freeboarding is?
So freeboard, so just, you know, using some generic numbers, let's say the top of the basin was at elevation 100. During the 100-year storm event, we wouldn't, we'd want to see that the water didn't get any higher than elevation 99. Again, providing, so providing that one foot of like, what they refer to as freeboard from it just like overtopping the basin, you know, indiscriminately. Obviously, there's a spillway that's probably, again, because when you just, you know, hypothetically, there's a spillway that's lower than an elevation 99 that would start to let some of the water go. I'm, but for some reason, you know, there was some kind of, you know, it was clogged with branches or trees, you know, they, we want to see that extra one foot of freeboard. And that's just per kind of the Mass DEP handbook. So that's what that, that's what that's referring to. So again, so in the, in the previous version, they were showing something less, whether it was, you know, whether it was like, you know, eight inches or nine inches. They didn't have, they didn't have the full foot that would be recommended.
Thank you. Does that answer your question, James?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
The other one I had a question on was section 11 about the diameter of the pipes and how, how those calculations are determined.
Yeah. So we'll have, we'll have to look at that a little closer. So basically, when I, when I was in the latest information and I noticed that, you know, the storm event, which wasn't matching, and what they're saying is they use the 100-year like storm intensity, which can be a different number. So I'll have like, so it's, you know, it's, you know, it's a, it's a difference between like a rainfall like depth versus a rainfall like intensity. So yeah, we could, we can look at that, but that's, that could be valid.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Jim Dietrich. Do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions at the moment, Sarah, because James has done such a wonderful job reviewing this so far. The things that might have jumped out at me, he's covered, and I didn't see anything else in there that I thought was worth talking about at the moment.
Okay. Um, Sean?
Not good at the moment, sir.
John?
Yeah, it looks like James covered some of the items that were on my list. I was going to ask about the car charging stations. And some just more information on the monitoring plan, but we, we talked about that. So I have nothing to add specific to this report at this time. Thanks.
Uh, Brian?
No, I'm good. I think James, as everyone else has spelled out, has done a great job covering a lot of issues, answered a lot of questions, and just want to see where it goes from here.
Catherine?
Like everyone else, say, James covered most of my comments. However, I do have a couple of further comments. One is related to on, on page three, where there's some discussion about a sidewalk. And there's a statement at the bottom of the page that basically says it's the assumption that a sidewalk will be required should the town construct a sidewalk in School Street. And I, that kind of struck me because I am leaning towards an opinion that a sidewalk should be required regardless of whether or not there is a connecting sidewalk on School Street, that an access down to the main road, a pedestrian access should be required regardless of whether or not there's a continuation on, on School Street. And then my second thing, which I, I didn't see in here, but I could have missed, would be that I believe that we should probably have a condition that sort of the pump station and the, the pipes that service it and all that are maintained and serviced by the applicant.
Okay.
I, I think he said at the prior meeting that they would be, but just, you know, to kind of tie that up, I think it makes sense that they should be. And then I agree with what James said. Otherwise, I don't have any, those are my two additional comments.
Um. Is there any member of the public which wishes to speak on the engineering period? Luke Legere.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Luke Legere McGregor, Legere and Stevens on behalf of the Citizens Initiative for Manchester, Manchester Affordable Housing. Just following up on your good question, Madam Chair, about potential conditions to ensure protection of the vernal pools during construction. I, it might, it may be beneficial for the board to request input from the Conservation Commission on that particular point, if you've not already. I, I think you had received some input from the CONCOM. But I think as you acknowledged, there are certainly differences between Manchester's Wetland Bylaw and the State Weapons Protection Act, under which that notice and intent will be filed and the CONCOM will be reviewing this project. So to ensure that your local interests under the wetlands bylaw are protected, I think it may be useful and beneficial to get the two cents of the Conservation Commission on conditions they would recommend to protect the vernal pools.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Engler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, Jeff Engler from SLB School Street. I mean, if it pleases the board, you can continue with public comment. I, I think we just wanted to respond and enhance to Mr. Cody's comments, and our civil engineer is with us tonight to provide possibly some answers to the board, but it may make sense for us to speak after you've taken additional comments from the public. But I defer to the board's preferences.
Okay, that's fine. I'll move on. Dan Hill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, Dan Hill, I represent the Manchester Essex Conservation Trust. I, we have our civil engineer present tonight, John Chesia. As you know, John has submitted a couple of comment letters. We submitted one this afternoon. Rather lengthy, and John will summarize the salient points. Before we get to that, I did want to address two topics. The first is with respect to the drainage design and the proposed connection to the culvert that's under School Street. I don't think this issue has been addressed yet. The culvert that runs under School Street basically drains or alleviates potential flooding from the wetland on the project site and channels that water across the street onto a town-owned parcel. It's parcel 4321. The applicant is proposing a very unusual connection, basically creating, proposing to install a new drain pipe in School Street, the public right of way, and connecting to this culvert. And then the water would then obviously discharge onto the town property. This is really unprecedented, and there's no legal foundation to, to allow this. It's, it's well established that under chapter 40B, the zoning board nor the Housing Appeals Committee has any authority to grant easements over town property and certainly doesn't have the authority to, to allow a private developer to install pipes and conduits within a town right of way. There's case law on this directly on point. Your town council can, can advise you on that. So we question why this is even being proposed. I understand it's an overflow, but there's still water that's going to be channel, like channeled through this pipe and then discharging onto town property. Just for point of reference, the, the culvert is just south of the proposed driveway entrance for the project, roughly across from Atwater Drive. And then the second issue is this, this theme, which I, which we keep hearing from Beals and Thomas, suggesting that we can defer a review of substantive issues until after the permit has been issued. I addressed this at the last hearing that the case law is very clear. Zoning boards cannot impose permits and impose conditions on their permits that would subject the developer to a post-permit review and approval process. And yet that's kind of what is being proposed and recommended here. One of the themes I hear through Beals and Thomas through the comment letters and testimony is that we can defer the sewer details, the water details, the comprehensive, the construction management plan. We can review those things later. But in ordinarily, that's true. For any other conventional project, subdivision control law, you have, you name it, that's acceptable. But under chapter 40B, it's not. And I'm going to, I'm going to send you a letter after the meeting outlining that issue with the case law that is very clear on that point. So this kind of goes back to what we talked about previously, but it's still relevant to civil engineering. That being these extensions of the water and sewer lines. These extensions have not been vetted. I know the DPW is waiting for some analysis from the developer, but there's no assurance that that analysis is going to be done in time before the close of the hearing. And nor, nor are we going to be able to have the opportunity to peer review it and to provide public comment. This is a huge mistake. These are critical extensions of public utilities. These are major issues for this project, for any project. And they're not uncommon. Chapter 40B projects often include extensions of major utilities, but those are always vetted in these public hearings. The Housing Appeals Committee, which usually is, you know, favorable and protective of developers, has actually acknowledged that towns can impose conditions in their permits to require mitigation for problems that are caused by these utility extensions. The law is clear on that. The only way you as a board would know what kind of mitigation to impose would be if you had the analysis during your hearing. Without the analysis, you have no idea whether this project can tie into these systems. We don't know if the sewer system has the capacity or that the water system has adequate pressure. Both DPW and Beals and Thomas have raised this concern about adequacy of capacity and pressure. It's not appropriate to defer these issues until after the permit's been issued. So again, I'll, I'll submit something in writing after tonight's hearing so you see what the case law says on this point. But again, I urge the board not to defer this issue. And if it has to, because the hearing has to be closed, because the applicant is not giving an extension, then I think you should consider that unfortunate decision on the applicant's part in crafting the appropriate decisions on your permit. So that being said, I would like to turn it over to John, who's really the technical expert, and he has a lot of comments to make on the stormwater system and the design. And I know he'll, he'll provide the high points here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
State your name.
John Chesia of Chesia Consulting Services. And, you know, Dan has brought up a few of the comments. I also included those in my letter. I think that when you look at this project, I look at lots of these for towns as well as private parties. I've designed 40Bs in the past. But this, and this one in particular seems to be very scant on information. You don't have information on water. You don't have information on sewer. You have minimal information on existing soil conditions. The response to my comment said, we'll do it later. There's minimal, minimum information on the retaining walls. We'll do that later. I mean, these walls are massive. Some of them are holding back infiltration systems, but there's no cross-sections through them. There's a standard sort of basic detail from a manufacturer's cut sheet, but doesn't have any dimension data on it. It doesn't show how anything is going to fit together. The, as Dan was talking about, the pipe in the public way, in addition, there's a spillway that's at the property line and sort of requires grading within the right of way so that if that overflows, it'll overflow towards the wetland, not towards the road. If there's going to be a sidewalk built on that road in the future, would it be on the side of this project? It would seem likely that that would be where you'd want it. So you wouldn't have a crosswalk, right? Everybody having to cross. This is the biggest, would be the biggest residence in the area. So now when they start using this right of way for other purposes, that limits what you might be able to do yourself as a town. I think that's something to look into. The, they did address some of my comments. They changed some of the soil conditions where they had done some testing. They had, like I said, there's limited testing out there, and there should be more so you really have a better handle on the soils. And one of my bigger comments, I think, is that in the center of the site, there's two vernal pools indicated. The topography stops at the wetland line. So you really don't know any detail on the topography in there, but when it says vernal pool, that means it is a pool or a ponding area. It's going to be a depression that fills with water and holds that water. But the analysis But the analysis in the drainage assumes that they added the section that says, yes, water goes to this, but then it directly flows down to the culvert below. There's no slowdown because of going into a pool or ponding area. There's no topography to confirm where the divides. There's two of them shown, so presumably there's an up and a down between them. I mean, that's sort of basic data, and I think that it's warranted for the board to at least have the topography within that area. How does this thing work? Where does the water go? There's a lot of areas in the response to my comments, and it was nice that they did a response, actually, because lots of times, people don't even respond to about his comments. But the claim in the response isn't backed up with the data in the report in many cases. One of my comments, which I think is a significant comment, and I think they are trying to address it, but this whole thing, road pitches right down into School Street. So if the catch basins don't catch the water, it doesn't go where they're going to say it goes, into the various drainage systems. So they did some stuff with great capacity, but none of the calculations in their great capacity spreadsheet match up with the pipe capacity. So I don't know how they got the flows to these different areas. None of it seems to match up. The hydroCAD data and the plan data didn't match up. That might have been some of the stuff that Matt was talking about, but I looked at it, and the numbers don't match, so it's hard to know what's right. You know whoever's building it is going to build to the plan, because they don't have the counts, so it all needs to work out. Concerns remain with the bio-retention area. I commented that they're not considered a rate control structure. I cited the references. All of you are welcome to look, get up in the handbook. It's online. All the tables, I referenced them all, so you can see what I'm talking about there. But the bio-retention area has basically been lifted a little bit, so that it's above the one spot where the ledge is. There's obviously ledge out here. There's two test pits. It's within it. It's about 300 feet, 250, 300 feet long. Two test pits may not be enough. I think the test pits say preliminary testing. So some of this may be picked up with the Conservation Commission, but it would certainly make sense, I think, for this board to vet this stuff properly, too. I think it is of local concern. And I think there's a problem, you know, there is an issue with that. It's 100 feet exactly from a vernal pool. It has a big stone spillway, which is a difficult thing to control rate with, yet it's a rate control, 10-year storm flows out of it. I think that's something that needs to be looked at a little more carefully. Their response on the retaining walls, so they're going to put a Title V impermeable barrier behind it. There's no detail of how they're going to do this, but Title V in stormwater are not the same thing. I mean, Title V systems, as I'm sure many of you are familiar with, although it sounds like you have sewer in Manchester, most of it. It's of small flows, sort of spread out over the day. It's not like the same as a, you know, three inches of rain all at once being forced down into the ground next to a retaining wall. That puts, if you put a barrier there, it can add pressures, but it also can force the water into coming out at the toe and odd pressures and things like that that aren't easily just swept away with like, well, we'll just put a piece of plastic behind the wall. Again, in the vernal pool area in the center, you are, they are proposing some recharge now. They added another system. They only have one test pit under it. They should have more. It's at the bottom of the slope, not at the top. If it's all as much ledge as they say, maybe there isn't as much room as they think. And secondly, if there's two vernal pools, it would only be recharged for one of them, potentially. We don't have enough topography to know. So I don't think they've vetted that properly or satisfactorily enough to deal with it. I think they need a mounting analysis for the rain garden, because it's two feet to ledge. Ledge doesn't infiltrate, so you've got a very thin layer in which to do this, and they're using that for rate control, although they say they're not, for every storm. And in the 10-year storm, I think it's almost a 50% reduction or something close to that. They, I know at last meeting, I brought up about there's an existing depression that provides recharge that should be part of that overall recharge calculation. You can't, you fill a hole that's currently providing groundwater recharge in this depression, and you should account for that volume. I think it's not a big deal to do that. They have all the numbers. They just need to add it in and show it, and maybe they're doing enough to make it work. I didn't do that check, but at least it should be in the values. I think, lastly, I have to agree, though, that a construction management plan for a site like this should be provided at this stage of your review. This is, it doesn't have to be the full, super detailed with the contractor type of thing, but this should be enough to show, here's how we're going to do this. We can do this. We have enough place to store water temporarily. We're not going to trap, you can't store your temporary water in an infiltration system, because then you clog it up, because that's all catching sediments. There's not a lot of places to put it. I mean, it's on a hill. Everything flows down, but it's pretty limited where you can trap it. Those are things that need to be sort of vetted out in this process. Where are you going to put the water? Where are you going to put all the trucks and the parking for the workers and all of those things? We know about the trick, the truck trips with all the dump trucks. What's that going to do to your existing road? That's a lot of load constantly on a road that probably isn't, you know, as heavily traveled as it will be. So those are things to consider. I think you should get that information before you close the hearing and be able to understand what the impacts are. And that's all I have right now, and thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public wish to be heard on this subject? Alan McMillan, would you please state your name and address? You need to unmute yourself.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Alan McMillan, Rockport, Massachusetts. I'm on the conservation in Rockport. I have to begin what I have to say by saying, this appears to be all about making a profit for someone who has no vested interest in Manchester, and there are so many, as Mr. Chesia just pointed out, there are so many unanswered questions. For example, the stormwater plan, as has been written up, has over 40 deficiencies in it. The original plan was asking from the Wetland Protection Act for 19 exemptions in the town of Rockport. We've never had someone ask for more than two exemptions. These are all warning flags. And then, when you consider the project overall, the carbon footprint of what they want to do up there is incredible. I mean, the thousands of tons of rock to be blasted, the acres of trees to be cut down on the edge of a wildlife preserve. None of this makes any sense to rational-thinking people, and I'm just wondering why we continue to go on and on and on and on with something that's clearly hugely inappropriate for the area, and I thank you for listening to my comments.
Thank you. Sarah Pierce, will you state your name and address?
Yes, Sarah Pierce, 9 Friends Street, Manchester. I just wanted to refer back to the other only 40B project I'm aware of that was back in 2008. And one of the reasons, and I'd like to know if I could ask Mr. Tallerman to respond to this.
You have to, everything has to go through me, please.
Okay, sorry. Maybe I should read first and then ask for your permission, or however that works. Number three on the reasons to deny the 40B was for the project access. And it says, "As the applicant's site plans plainly reveal, the project will be served by a single means of access on Summer Street. This single driveway provides both residential and emergency access to a site that exhibits steep slopes and varied topography." Excuse me. On at least two occasions, the HAC has affirmed zoning board denials that were based upon concerns relating to single access developments. Sites two cases, OIB Corp. versus Branch Tree Board of Appeals and Lexington Woods LLC versus Wellfam Board of Appeals. In summary, each of these cases underscores the longstanding planning principle that single-access developments unacceptably sacrifice public safety, especially where, as here, topographical challenges exist. Accordingly, the board should closely scrutinize this issue and either require a second means of access or deny the project due to adverse impacts to public safety. And I ask, Madam Chair, if you could please ask Mr. Tallerman why he was asking to deny this 40B back in 2007 and '08, based on a project accessibility, which was a much less slope grade, or, you know, less slope, and it was 601 Summer Street. So this is definitely a more difficult terrain and a super slope. So I'm confused as to why he would think that one should have been denied and this one should be allowed.
I don't think that's an appropriate question to ask the attorney of the applicant. I'm sorry.
Well, he was the attorney representing this.
I don't care. That has nothing to do with this project.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Yep. Jeff Cokand, sorry.
Hi. Hi, that's okay. I'm Jeff Cochan. I'm a Manchester resident on Vine Street, MECT trustee for the past 17 years. I have spearheaded the spring and fall walks for MECT for the past decade. Many of them start at the entrance to the Wilderness Conservation Area off School Street, which is approximately 500 feet beyond the proposed development. Each of our walks has a topic such as nature photography, birding, tree and plant identification, mushroom foraging, or simply being quiet and listening, which creates a rare opportunity to engage a small group of people in the calmness of nature. We often walk down Old School Street. We cross over Sawmill Brook to the boardwalk, which would be within a row of this monstrosity. The building and surrounding development would have a huge impact on the visitor's experience. The weight of the building will be felt as you walk down Old School Street. Instead of seeing sunlight and leaves moving with the breeze, there'll be solid stone walls with a building looming overhead. Noise during the construction stage will make speaking difficult to our group. We talk and do things during construction that'll be nearly impossible. The finished product, full of cars and traffic and garbage trucks and hundreds of people, will make it impossible to immerse ourselves in nature. It'll ruin almost all these. This building will be visible from the trails that go around Cedar Swamp to the east, from the boardwalk, from Millstone Hill, from the parking lot, and from Old School Street. If the applicant is depending on planting deciduous trees to supposedly hide the building, let me remind you that six months of the year, there are no leaves on deciduous trees. If the applicant is depending on the trees outside of the property, the wetland is currently a natural area that changes over time. Beavers often take down mature trees in that area. We've seen it happen over and over again over the years, and that'll expose even more of this oversized project. In the areas where the applicant is retaining trees, particularly on Old School Street, please remember that when you cut into a forest, the remaining trees are going to appear skinny and spindly with the remaining living branches way up at the top. Unlike a tree growing in the middle of a field, the remaining trees will not have some great arching branches going all over the place. It's, they're going to look like when you cut trees down in front of other trees. The lower branches won't go back, and the upper branches are not going to shield the view at all. So, I mean, the conclusion from this, for me, as a person who has been hiking in this area for decades and organizes these walks, is this building is going to have a tremendous impact on the activities that MECT holds there, as well as the enjoyment of any visitor that comes to the area. No amount of landscaping lipstick is going to change that, so, thank you.
Thank you. Kaitlin Epps?
Hi. My name is Kaitlin Epps. I live on Proctor Street, and I am mom to a disabled child, and so I'm particularly interested in how this building is planning to be accessible to School Street and along the property itself. I know that there has been a lot of discussion about a single entrance in and out in a rather long, steep grade, and I, being that she is in a wheelchair and a walker, I can only imagine how difficult it may be for her to get in and out, and, which is particularly unfortunate. And so I would love to be able to review the access and the ADA accommodations that are being made for this, to make sure that elderly and disabled people can live in this property sufficiently and exit in an emergency without being subject to emergency vehicles needing to be able to get up there in order for the disabled people to be able to get out. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll be talking about the sidewalk a little later tonight. Anybody else from the public? Mr. Angler, would you like to?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate it. Once again, for the record, Jeff Angler from SLD School Street. I just wanted to make a few quick comments. One, we did submit comments today on Mr. Cody's letter, but I think he would agree, and the board would as well. Typically, the comments are submitted prior to the hearing. We have the hearing. Typically, we, the peer reviewers submits comments. We have the hearing, and then we submit response. We chose to submit a response, even though the letter was submitted only on Friday, because we don't think there's that many outstanding issues. I certainly respect Mr. Cody, obviously has not had time to review our subsequent submittal, because it was just done today. But from our perspective, we're confident that he's going to find our answers and additional exhibits and calculations satisfactory, addressing the remaining items that were still outstanding in his previous letter. So we feel certainly very appreciative of the whole Beals and Thomas team and all the review they've done, as I think the board themselves have said, they've been quite diligent and thorough. And we think this final round of, or volley from us, both the letter that was submitted and the exhibits today, hopefully can close out a lot of the, or the only issues that we saw still outstanding relative to the Beals and Thomas letter issued on May 20th. So with that said, and I have Carlton Quinn, my civil engineer from Allen &amp; Major, who can talk through a couple of the technical questions that were raised. I will just hit on a few points. Certainly, we can submit a parking plan that shows electronic vehicle charging stations like other members of the board. That's very important to us. We fully expect to have multiple charging stations at the property, so we can certainly submit that. Relative to the utilities and connections, those that are in the construction business know the utility companies have all the leverage relative to those considerations. We can ask for things, but whether the board conditions it or not, if the utility company say, well, for instance, we have an existing overhead connection there now, if they want us to use that connection, you know, we can't say, oh, the zoning board conditioned us. We can't. They do their own thing. So I would just advise the zoning board, perhaps its best efforts or request, but, you know, and you can ask your peer review consultant or other people that are familiar with the utility companies, but they're not going to defer to the local municipality relative to those requests. They're going to do what they want. Secondly, relative to asking the Conservation Commission for recommendations on preservation of the vernal pools, we don't have a problem of that on its face. However, as the board knows, and one of the items on the next public hearing is our discussion on all the waivers from wetland bylaws. So if the board, you know, does not grant those waivers and/or they issue conditions based on CONCOM input that is more rigorous than state standards, we can't build the project, and obviously, we have recourse available to us. But, so it's not as simple as, we'll ask the CONCOM what to do and write it in the permit. It's not that simple. We've made it very clear in our communication with Beals and Thomas and the town, what we've submitted today. We need those waivers to build the project. and the town, what we've submitted today, we need those waivers to build the project. We fully expect to protect those vernal pools in accordance with DEP regulations. Although not required and not customarily done, we are reaching out to a general contractor to get some preliminary guidance on how we will approach that situation. But CMPs are always done post-permitting. I mean, almost particularly in sites like this that are very detailed and have lots of considerations. So I don't dismiss any of the concerns that have been made by members of the public or the peer reviewers or the zoning boards. But those details cannot be addressed in a CMP with any credibility until all the construction documents are done or simultaneous to that. So we are endeavoring to provide some preliminary input to the to the board on specifically that vernal pool issue, but we will not be submitting a full CMP plan prior to the close of the public hearing. We would fully expect a condition that requires us to do so to the building inspector's satisfaction prior to us getting a building permit, which is a heck of a lot of leverage for the town. So you know, you'll get all those details. We're just not going to provide them because it would be sloppy. Mr. Hill, who I've dealt with on many, many projects, and we had a project like this in Winchester, where he represented the Butters and they litigated and tied us up for a while. That project is now under construction. It had a lot of the same similar characteristics as this project. So we disagree. I'm not going to get into it. Mr. Hill can submit his letter and my counsel will respond. But post-permit conditions are done all the time. Your your municipal entities can review the plans to be consistent with the plans that have been submitted for the record. That's done all the time. So we disagree almost unanimously with many of the points that Mr. Hill has introduced. Relative to Mr. Chesia, we haven't reviewed his comments. We obviously saw the first letter. He submitted his second letter only hours before the meeting. We'll take another look at those comments. For his own edification, the sidewalk is not proposed on School Street as proposed on the other side of School Street. He should recognize that because of all the vernal pools and other resource areas on our side of School Street, it would make the creation of a sidewalk on that side an impossibility. And also, to the mom with the disabled child, I too have a child with severe disabilities. I would say that this development will probably be more ADA friendly than the last hundred houses or developments built in Manchester by the sea, single level living, elevator access, fully ADA compliant. It's exactly the type of development that's great for people with mobility impairments or other considerations. Unlike, once again, most of the residential opportunities in Manchester, which have multiple stairs, multiple floors. So I digress. And then lastly, I mean, the comments, you know, about our carbon footprint and and impact on it seems greatly inconsistent to me when the town, a town meeting recently approved a project twice as large as us upon full buildout right across the street from us that will be producing more cars than us, occupying more land than us, has many, many of the same characteristics tying into the same sewer water, but because we they don't have residence. All right, it's as people know, life sciences and the like. From my review and talking to people in the town, people are thrilled with it. And it passed a town meeting. So to say that's okay, but our proposal is an atrocity. I mean, subjective. And I think it's inconsistent, Madam Chair. I just wanted to make that because I've heard the criticism and it just seems inconsistent. I know it's not germane to this public dialogue. So.
I want to correct your information. At the town meeting, there was a change made to zoning. There has been absolutely no project submitted across the street to any board of the town, and there has been no approval of any project.
I'm aware of that. I'm quite aware of that, but I know the zoning has been approved and I know the planning board in in preliminary stages is very enthusiastic. I know a lot of people in town are quite enthusiastic. I grant you, a permit has not been issued for that. But you know, we'll see what happens over the next year or so relative to that application. So with that said, Madam Chair, we do have Carlton Quinn from Allen and Major, the civil engineer who prepared the plans and a lot of the analysis here and can talk at a high level about some of the points that were raised by Mr. Cody and to a lesser extent, Mr. Hill. And we'll be happy to answer any additional questions.
Thank you. Mr. Quinn? Mr. Quinn?
Carlton, I can't hear you. Sorry. Sorry. Apologize. My phone is muted. Carlton Quinn, Allen Major, representing SLV, civil engineer for the project. Good evening, board. I'll run quickly through Mr. Cody's comments, then I have some other comments we had also. I provided in my letter some additional information on the sidewalk and how big it would be and the waiver that we would require if that was to be built. The CMP plan, I think we've gone over. I think a lot of this was kind of housekeeping and cleanup from the last revision we had. Quickly going through is a lot of stormwater items here. Yeah, so the calculation for the rainfall data, we used a different method, kind of a simpler method for the grate and pipe sizing. Called the rational method to do the the pipe sizing and do the evaluation on the smaller systems where as we used a storm event in the computer model to model the entire site, which is much more complicated. And it's an acceptable design practice. It's noted in the Mass Highway Design Manual and we use it almost for every single project. So I think it was just a clarification of what method we were using for that with some of the inconsistencies with the rainfall data that was noted. And there was actually, there was another PDF in there that had been carried over from our previous one that we also updated and provided back to Mr. Cody today. So that was just a missing item on our previous version that also had some discrepancies, but it was updated today and given to Mr. Cody. The item on the freeboard, our last design admittedly had less than one for the freeboard. We only need to raise, we only had to raise the berm a tenth of a foot to make it into compliance. It was, I believe, one to two inches short of the foot freeboard. So in this latest round, we've raised it to make sure there's at least one for the freeboard on both of the ponds. Some more calculations on the rational method. And I think that was it. I mean, I really think the the housekeeping items from Beals and Thomas should be clarified with this latest revision. And you know, if there's any small items to clean up, I'm hoping Mr. Cody can just reach out and we might be able to just clarify it after he's a chance to review our letter from today. Some of the items from Mr. Mitchell, you know, e-car parking. I'm sure this project is going to have some e-car parking as part of it. The underground versus overhead electric, I think, you know, if you want us to show underground on the approval plans and you know, we can even include them in our building permit plans, we're happy to show underground and see where the electric company lands on it when we get to that point. The freeboard was an item. And then the diameter of the pipes, that was an inconsistency. That was just a clarification of what method we were using to size the pipes. And also, as for the utilities of water and sewer, we're currently going through the process of getting the town's DPW's engineer to go through that data. And I expect them to provide us with mitigation for the sewer and water once we get through that process. And that should happen, I think, at the latest in the next month. I expect information to start coming in in the next week or two from the town's consultants for water and sewer, Tad and Howard. And then we are providing Tad and Howard some information on the sewer once we get some existing data measurements done, which are should be finished up, I think, this week. So I think as far as the water and sewer goes, you're going to see some, probably some mitigation requests coming from the DPW or the DPW's engineer in the next few weeks, just to clarify those two items. Mr. Hill, you know, again, I'm not a land judge attorney, but every utility we get comes from the right of way, water, sewer, electric. Almost every project we tie into the municipal drainage, I've never had an issue or even had someone tell us we had to get the easement in the right of way. I thought as a public right of way, you know, it was for the use of all people who abutted it to go in and out of it and use it as required by the DPW. Again, I'm not an attorney. Dan is. We can follow up with that following it. And as far as that existing culvert, half of the project site is going to that culvert today. It's not like we're introducing new water. We did a, you know, a global analysis of the whole project showing where all the water is going in the existing conditions. And we showed how we made it better in the proposed conditions. So we've mitigated all those projects with our stormwater design, as was revealed by Beals and Thomas. We're actually allowing additional volume in areas that we have to because we're trying to meet the existing volumes for the vernal pools and not show that we're making any inconsistent designs where we're taking, you know, water from Paul, you know, giving it to Peter. We're spreading the water out existing as the existing watershed and analysis shows it in the proposed conditions. I think pretty closely, within, you know, percent percentage points. Again, I haven't seen John Chesey's letter. It hasn't even come across my desk to date, so I'm not going to comment on that. And then again, the accessibility with with the sidewalk, I think Jeff has spoken of that. And I think the issue is, you know, if we provide sidewalk and someone gets down to the sidewalk and there's no sidewalk there to go, where have you left that person? This is all dependent on a sidewalk being on School Street. Because if you get down to the end of the sidewalk and you've nowhere to walk, you're going to be in the middle of a highway. You know, the the MAB requirement to provide people with disabilities accessible areas to their benefit, providing a sidewalk that leads to nowhere, you know, I don't think is a benefit to the project. But again, we can disagree. And those were the comments I had noted. I'm happy to answer any additional questions. Thank you.
So Madam Chair, I think those are the extent of our comments relative to Beals and Thomas peer review as it relates to civil engineering. We submitted a some extensive response and additional exhibits relative to the environmental considerations, which is, as this board knows, another channel or silo to this process. But we look forward to having Mr. Cody do a final pass through of everything that we submitted, seeing if there's anything outstanding and and reflecting that on what ultimately will be the final planned set of record.
Thank you, Mr. Engler. Looks like I have two more hands raised. Betsy Ridge Madsen, please state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Betsy Ridge Madsen and I live in Essex at twenty-two Saginaw East Road. First of all, I'm very grateful to your board for having these hearings. I've been to several of them and I think they're really helpful. I think one of the big issues here is that the state regulations for 40B projects and the town of Manchester and I drive by it, I mean, I live in Essex, don't necessarily agree with the same thing, but I think that the it's really important not to give the waivers that the state would like us to give or that the applicant would like us to give without really considering all the things that you've heard already about the environment and the sensitive natural area that's being really destroyed. So I just want to say that I hope that the town of Manchester will preside and not go ahead with waivers before permitting and that that you're doing the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Becky Jakes?
Hi, thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to make a point of clarification regarding the sidewalk on the site. The town has said, and I just want to reiterate, that if this development goes forward, there will be a sidewalk which the town will extend over to the site. If not on the same side, on the other side, but there will be a sidewalk. And we have said this numerous times. Thank you.
Thank you.
Becky Jakes, acting chair of Manchester Select Board. Sorry about that.
Carrie Almog?
Yes, good evening. Thank you. My name's Carrie Almog. I live on Bridge Street here in Manchester. I am fifth generation of my family to live here in this town. And I would just not be able to live with myself if I did not say, and I know the majority of town feels this way, this project does not belong here. It does not benefit our town in any way. It only takes away from our town and it's I can't believe that it's gotten this far.
Thank you. I will circle back around to the board again to see if there's any more questions with respect to the engineering peer review and subsequent information we've received this evening. James Mitchell?
I don't have any additional questions. Everything's been clarified to the extent possible tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Sean? Sean?
No, I don't have anything further, Sarah. Everything's pretty much done.
John Benares?
Not at this time, Sarah. Thanks.
Brian Salacy?
Yeah, I just want to piggyback on what Becky had to say. It's irrelevant as to what the town's plans are, what we do on our land. We want access to the street. And what when we get there is shouldn't be a condition. The developer shouldn't be conditioning the town. And what we do when he gets there, we want access to the street, then from there, we'll go from there. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Jim Dietrich?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate Town Select Board commenting on the sidewalk and clearing that up. That seems to be a constant area of confusion. And I would agree with what was said by Brian that the developer needs to put in a sidewalk. Period. The town has said they will attach, they will extend their sidewalk. So let's stop talking about this darn thing. It's that's an issue that's been covered. We need a sidewalk going on the developer's project from School Street up to the building. And it has to be a compliant. End of story. Let's get over that. I have no further comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Catherine? How?
I don't have anything to add beyond what others have said. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. With that, we will move on to reviewing some of the zoning waiver requests. And discuss some possible conditions. So we obviously have had a lot of discussion with respect to an ADA sidewalk down from the building to the street. I think it's extremely important for people to remember that this is not a particularly wide driveway and it curves substantially. This building is in the walking school in the walking zone to school. There are no buses from Essex to Manchester for the elementary school. So that the elementary school kids need to get down to the street. And I don't see that they can do it by walking down the driveway. So I would like to have a discussion among the board regarding whether we wish to have as a condition of a comprehensive permit that they're required to have an ADA accessible sidewalk down the driveway.
Do you want us to vote on this?
Are we ready to vote?
That was my question.
Okay.
I mean, Sarah, this is Catherine. I don't have any comments. I'm ready to vote if people are ready to vote.
I'll make a motion that we include an ADA sidewalk on the driveway as a condition of the project, whether or not there's a sidewalk on School Street, extension sidewalk extension on School Street. Second, Brian seconds. Okay. Any discussion? I will take. James.
Approved.
John.
Approved.
John.
Approved.
Brian.
Approved.
Jim.
Approved.
Catherine.
Approved.
And Sarah approves. So that leads into a waiver request. And I've lost a piece of paper. Hate that. So the the waiver request is on the March 23, 2022 waiver list. Is number four. Section of the zoning bylaw. Which restricts the coverage by impervious surface to 15%. I believe that we received information today from Mr. Angler or or Alan and Major probably, that the addition of the sidewalk will increase the impervious surface to 15.4%. So are we willing to grant that waiver? Catherine.
I just had a question, Sarah, and that is, can we let me think about how to phrase this. Can we grant this waiver so that it applies to an expansion of impervious surface that results from the addition of a sidewalk without granting an overall waiver that would just allow for expansion of it impervious surface for any reason?
Yes, we can.
If that makes sense.
Yep.
Okay. I think that would be great.
Sarah, it's James. I had a question. It seems like we're very close on this percentage. But I'm just curious if we could request that some of the pervious surfaces on the upper driveway be changed to pervious pervious or permeable surfaces to the exact extent that sidewalks would be impervious. In other words, do a trade off. So we don't, we wouldn't have to request the waiver, we'd be still under 15%. And we could kind of have the best of both worlds. We get the sidewalk and we get the 15% or less that we're seeking under the normal bylaw.
Ms. Strangler, is there any flexibility there?
No, we're not. If the town wants a sidewalk, you got to give us a waiver as Ms. House said to do to exceed the 15%. But we're not amenable to finding, I mean, the fire chief, we've talked ad nauseam. He's not going to want pervious pavers or nor the sidewalk or the like. So it's a it's a small concession. It's for something that the town wants. So if we build the sidewalk respectfully, we'd ask for that waiver to be granted. And you can condition it just exactly as Ms. House said. We're not allowed to exceed 15% unless the sidewalk to School Street is built.
What?
So I'll make a motion that we grant the waiver of 4.9.5.1 dot P to exceed the 15% coverage by impervious surface solely for the purpose of building an ADA accessible sidewalk down to School Street.
Sarah, I would suggest putting the number on there too. If you if you know it's to 15.4%.
Okay.
Specify that in addition to to its contingent on the sidewalk as you did.
Okay, grant a waiver of up to 15.4% of coverage by impervious surface solely for the purpose of building an ADA compliant sidewalk down to School Street.
Thank you.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Jim seconds. Any discussion? I'll take a roll call vote. James.
Approved.
John.
Approved.
John.
Approved.
Brian.
Approved.
Jim.
Approved.
Catherine.
Approved.
And Sarah approves. Okay, let's go through some of the other waivers. Well, let's go back to talking about the the I guess the EV charging stations will wait till we receive the plan from Mr. Angler regarding number and what type of stations they'll be. Does that make sense to defer that as a condition?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Yes, I would defer pending further submitted by the applicant. Because I think they realize to put in a project like this without EV charging stations readily available is going to be a detriment. It's going to affect affect them and they will have to eventually do it because the residents will demand it. So yes, I agree with your process.
Okay. Okay. Now let's go to waiver one. Section 4.4. Limited Commercial District Use Regulations. Multi-family unit dwellings are not allowed in the LCD. Do we want to grant this waiver?
I don't have a problem. It's Brian.
I'll make a motion then. I move that we approve the waiver under section 4.4 of the zoning bylaw to allow multi-family unit dwelling in the LCD district.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? I'll take a roll call vote. James.
Approved.
John.
Approved.
John.
Approved.
Brian.
Approved.
Jim.
Approved.
Catherine.
Approved.
And Sarah approves. Next is waiver number five. Section 4.9.5.2 point D of the zoning bylaw, which is a waiver to ask that the zoning board of appeals acts as a permit granting authority for the impervious surface that we just voted on. I'll make a motion that we approve the waiver under 4.9.5.2.2. Do I have a second?
You wish to put a limit on it as we did before.
That this is only the administrative part of saying that we we have the authority to approve that.
Thank you.
Rather than the planning board.
Thank you. Seconded.
Any discussion? I'll take a roll call vote. James. John. John. Brian. Jim.
Approved.
Approved.
Sarah approves. We're going to defer the building height until we have the architectural peer review. We'll defer the accessory structure until we receive information connection to the multiple to the municipal water and sewer. Waiver number eight is section 5.7.1 lot width. Where a 500 foot lot with this required and the existing lot is non-conforming at 291.2 feet. I'll make a motion that we approve waiver number eight under section 5.7.1.
Yes.
By law regarding lot width. Second.
Second.
Any discussion? I'll take roll call vote. James. John.
Approved.
John.
Approved.
Brian. Jim.
Approved.
Catherine.
Approved.
And Sarah approves. Next is for the building setback. Waiver number nine, section 5.7.3. LCD requires a setback of 150 feet from any other lot line at least 100 feet. This proposed project has a side setback of 82.6 feet and a and for an accessory structure, a street setback at 20 feet. I move to approve waiver of building setback under section 5.7.
Sarah, I have one question. It's James.
Yes.
I think I recall reading something about pumping station that would be an accessory structure that would need relief from that. Is that contradict this or is there any conflict here?
That's a separate waiver under number seven that we're going to defer until we get information on connecting to the municipal water and sewer.
I just wanted to be clear. Thank you.
So this is for the building itself.
Yep.
Sarah.
Yes.
So the accessory structure is what?
Pump station.
The pump station. Okay, thank you. So that actually leads in or comes circles back to what James asked. Is that correct?
So let's defer this one.
Good idea.
Yeah. I think so.
Next waiver request is section 6.2.2. Parking space dimension, the current bylaw requires a parking space to be nine feet by 20 feet. The request from the applicant, the waiver requested by the applicant is to make the spaces nine feet by 18 feet. And I would also mention the fact that the recodification currently being worked on by the planning board is proposing to drop the size of the spaces down to nine feet by 18 feet because that seems to be the norm for other towns. So I'll make a motion that we approve section waiver for section 6.2.2 regarding parking space dimension. You have a second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? I'll take a vote. James.
Approved.
John.
Approved.
John. Brian.
Approved.
Jim. Catherine. And Sarah approves. Next is waiver under section 6.2.2. Number of off-street parking spaces. The applicant is asking for a waiver from a required number of 383 down to 236, which is, I believe, 1.73 per unit. Which is more generous than our multi-family housing in Manchester. Any discussion on this?
Oh, this, I, you know, any problems with parking is going to become a management nightmare and it doesn't fall on the town. So I don't have a problem with this, the the number of parking spots.
John.
I didn't say that.
Anyone else still aboard of?
I do have a comment, Sarah. It's James.
Yep.
I believe I've read and given information about other similar developments having a lower ratio, 1.5 cars per unit. So this is, I think you just mentioned, is still considered generous, even though it seems like a substantial reduction from 383 from our bylaw to 236. It's still well within the the parameters established and it's still for a project of this size, it's a generous allocation.
Okay. Any other comments? I'll make a motion that we approve the waiver under section 6.2.2 to allow the number of off-street parking spaces to be 236 instead of 383.
Seconded.
James seconds. Take a vote. James.
Approved.
John. John.
Approved.
Brian.
Approved.
Jim.
Approved.
Catherine.
Approved.
And Sarah approves. Now with respect to the parking configuration, I'm concerned that the space for the deliveries is insufficient. It's a space that's large enough for two cars or one box truck. I live on a relatively small street. And there are many times during the day when there's simultaneous trucks for the delivery services. I'll have a FedEx truck, MX, Amazon truck, UPS truck and a DHL truck. So I'm suggesting that as a condition, we require the space for deliveries to be large enough for at least two box trucks.
Sarah, what section are you on now? Which number?
It's not in a waiver. It's a condition.
We, Madam Chair, we have a formal area for deliveries. The whole cul-de-sac and other areas accommodate trucks to require us to formally have another second box truck area. It's only going to take away from, if you want to take away from parking, we can do that. But we can accommodate it and have fire access and all the other things. So if the board's comfortable with us reducing our parking, which we we think we're overparked, we can do that. But we're quite comfortable, like one of the members said, if we can accommodate deliveries in a efficient way. in a efficient way, it's going to be a nightmare for management and for the residents. We're quite comfortable that the design we have does just that. So I don't see it necessary to require us to have another box truck parking area. We already have one and we have other surplus areas that trucks can park on a temporary basis.
What does the board think?
I agree with Mr. Angler. I made that point earlier. It's, that's going to be his problem. As far as deliveries go. Just my, my feelings.
Okay. What are your thoughts, James?
I would agree. I think enough parking there. And as Mr. Angler pointed out, they still have to allow for fire, egress fire trucks and emergency equipment. And there's a turnaround there. Many of the trucks you're mentioning, your street is very small and confined. The, the trucks you're mentioning are usually there for just a few minutes. They'll run in and drop the package in the lobby and be gone. So I don't think it's going to pose a problem. And if it is, as Brian mentioned, it will be a management's problem to solve.
Okay. Other people agree with that?
I would make one comment, Madam Chair.
Yes.
And this, I, I agree with what's been said about it. I would also point out that in a building this size with 135 units, whichever delivery truck is there is going to be there for a longer period of time than would, they would experience making it delivered to a residence in Manchester. But it will still become the issue of the building management to deal with it. So I just wanted to point that out because it's not quite the same thing.
Okay.
But I'm happy with it. I would strike that condition.
Okay.
The only thing I would add to that is that I don't want trucks queued up in any fire lane or even if they're, I don't want, even if they're standing vehicles, they don't belong in a, in a fire lane. So they will, they will be standing, there will be vehicles queued waiting to get it, get in and get out. So I don't know if there's a staging area elsewhere on this, on the property. But again, that becomes ultimately is the management's problem, as long as it doesn't impact public safety.
Okay. Let's go on to waiver number 13. Section six point two point six of the zoning bylaw that requires planting, parking lot plantings of one minimum tree per five surface parking spaces. And the waiver request is to confirm that no trees are required in the underground parking lot. Sorry. I'll make a motion that we approve the waiver under section six point two point six that no plants are required to be planted in the underground parking lot.
Again.
Any discussion? I'll take a vote. James? Sean?
Approved.
John?
Approved.
Brian?
Tommy wants to know this because, but no approved.
Jim?
Approved.
Catherine?
Approved.
And Sarah approves. The next waiver is under section six point two point seven. The driveway curb cut permit. Under our zoning bylaw, driveway curb cut permit is required to be issued by the planning board. And the waiver request is to have the zoning board of appeals stand in place of the planning board. To approve this driveway curb cut. Any discussion? Okay.
And we issue a waiver that affects another town organization like this?
Yes, that's the problem with the comprehensive permit. That under 40B, it requires the zoning board of appeals to stand in the shoes of all the other town boards. So we're required to do it, but it still is a waiver from the zoning bylaw.
But it, by making this waiver, would, would we be opening up the door for a challenge to whatever decision we make? Because we have made a decision that affects another board.
No, the other board has no right to make any decision with respect to this comprehensive permit.
Okay, thank you.
Does that answer the question? Catherine?
Yeah, just a quick question. Is this, is this just the procedural waiver saying we will stand in the shoes of the planning board? Or is this, are we actually granting the curb cut with this waiver?
I can add to that, Madam Chair. The next three are all procedural. Basically, we're just asking the zoning board. And listen, we've been at this since September and the zoning board is familiar with the plans and the like. And they'll be the ones issuing or not issuing the permit. So we're simply just asking the zoning board to stand in the place of the other local permit granting authorities as is customary under 40B. I mean, these, these are pretty boilerplate vanilla waivers, in our experience anyway.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Dutcher.
Have the, has the planning board raised any objections to these waiver requests? Have they been asked or have they raised objections?
They've not been asked, but it's really, they don't. It's
I, I appreciate.
It's not worth making a lot of ado over it because the fact of the matter is, is the state has mandated that the ZBA has to make these decisions, but it's still a waiver of a local bylaw.
Understand. I, I appreciate that. And I'm not trying to be difficult because obviously I'm not aware. But it's, it looks like a, a perfect example of where our zoning issues sometimes are very confusing. But I would, I would agree to waive all the, all these 14, 15 and 16 for the same reason.
Six point two point seven, six point five, six point nine. If the zoning bylaw, the zoning board of appeals will grant the permits normally granted by the planning board. Do I have a second?
I would second.
Okay. Any more discussion?
Or just to be clear, are we going to vote on all three of these at once?
Yes.
Thank you.
And this is with respect to our authority to issue the special permit. Sean, did you have a question?
Yeah, I kind of did. Any, any input from our council on this?
Mr. Pucci?
Yes, you, you're required to exercise the jurisdiction that would otherwise be exercised by a local board if it's a local regulation such as a zoning bylaw, a local wetlands protection bylaw, something like this. And it's a, you know, the curb cut permit authority. Any state law issue that's, that's in another board's jurisdiction, you, you do not have the authority to stand in their shoes. But it's even more strong than has been described because in fact, if you don't exercise that jurisdiction, the town will end up waiving it because then that local board won't have the right to exercise the jurisdiction that they might otherwise have had. As you're standing in their shoes on these issues. Doesn't mean they can't weigh in about, you know, the substantive issue. In other words, if the planning board had a comment on the propriety of the curb cut request, they can certainly submit comments to you. And then you, you would, you know, consider that and whether or not to grant the waiver or grant the permit. So they can weigh into you. You know, they can comment to you as you receive comments along the way on other issues from local boards and local officials. But if you don't exercise their jurisdiction that would otherwise enter a local rule or regulation, that's going to end up being waived. So hopefully that describes that process a little for you.
Thank you.
So basically, our council has no objection to us waiving these.
Correct. Yeah. In fact, I would recommend, I would recommend that you do it because as I said, otherwise than nobody will exercise the jurisdiction because the, the other boards won't have that authority since it's subsumed within your authority in this process. You know, one issue, while I'm answering that question, and this part's important on that, and you're waiting on the issue of environmental peer review and, and those types of issues. But you want to be careful. I just wanted to clarify Beals and Thomas's earlier comments about the applicant going to the conservation commission under the State Wetlands Protection Act. That is true. They, they will do that and, and you don't have the authority to waive or act on performance standards or waiver requests that the conservation commission will have jurisdiction on under the State Wetlands Protection Act. But if you, you, you have to be very cautious in making sure that you have all the information required in front of you to act on the waiver requests with regard to the local wetland bylaw and regulations. Because regardless of the fact that the applicant will go to the conservation commission under the State Wetlands Protection Act, the local bylaw and regulations will not be part of that application process. You just want to be careful about that. And it is something that highlights kind of the questions that, that you've been asking about your board's ability to stand in the shoes of other boards with regard to jurisdiction over local regulations. So you just want to make sure that, you know, your processes, including all the information that you need to act on those waiver requests under the local bylaw and regulations.
Thank you, Mr. Pucci. Catherine, did you have a question?
I, I did. And it, it just relates to what Mr. Pucci was just saying, which is, do we have a, a separate waiver for our local wetlands bylaws? I'm not
Yes. We just received a new version this afternoon.
Okay. All right. So we're not dealing
You may not have them. They might not. And I think they came at four o'clock this afternoon. So they might not have been distributed to the rest of the board. But yes.
Okay. Thanks.
And though, yeah, we'll be seeking input from the conservation commission on those. And we're waiting for the environmental peer review to, to look at those.
Okay.
Um, so now we're back to the motion of approving the waivers under, the administrative waivers under section six point two point seven, six point five and six point nine. I'll take a roll call vote on it. James?
Approved.
Sean?
Approved.
John?
Approved.
Brian?
Approved.
Jim?
Approved.
Catherine?
Approved.
And Sarah approves. We will defer on number 17 because we're still waiting for information. On the sewer connection information feasibility study. Number 18 is section six point one point two, which again is an administrative issue of allowing the zoning board to grant the local, the permit regarding division of land and development of multiple dwellings, which is normally done by the planning board. So I make a motion that we approve the waiver under section six point 12.
I could use a second.
James?
Approved.
John?
Approved.
John?
Approved.
Brian?
Approved.
Jim?
Approved.
Catherine?
Approved.
And Sarah approves. We'll defer on stormwater management because I don't, not sure we have sufficient information. Next one is waiver 20, section six point four point three point two signage. Our local bylaw allows a non-illuminated sign no larger than three feet by three feet at the entrance. The waiver request is to install one monument sign with uplighting approximately six feet by six feet at the entrance of the site. And the explanation of the waiver states there will be no light spill over onto neighboring properties. So I make a motion that we approve the waiver under section six point four point three point two.
I'll second it.
Jim seconds. Any discussion?
Yeah, I do. This, this is Brian. I just, I mean, this set itself is, is pretty well self-explanatory. I think the six by six sign along School Street coming either way is, is kind of obtrusive. Whereas there's nothing else that you could confuse the, the site with. I'd like to see something a little smaller and less obtrusive.
I would agree with that, Sarah.
Yeah, I'm with that also.
Okay. So what are we suggesting?
Can we just go pursuant to the current zoning code?
So you don't want to grant this waiver?
No.
I would vote no on this.
Eric, can I make a comment?
Yes.
I think that the signage for most streets in Manchester at three by three is based on slower traffic and more densely populated areas. This is kind of a major thoroughfare with cars traveling at a higher speed, 40 to 50 miles an hour in some cases. I think that the scale of the opening and the scale of the width of the driveway and all the renderings I've seen, it's, it's pretty large. And I do think that a six by six sign lit properly, given the rate of travel and the number of cars, I don't think it's out of scale with the proportions of the project. I know it sounds large. But depending on the setback from the street, I just, I don't see this as, as being a big ugly billboard, so to speak. And I just think that's worth pointing out.
I, I guess my concern is if there's 136 different units and people are coming to visit, they need to be able to find the entrance. And I don't think a three by three sign you can find the entrance. That's my opinion. Jim?
Madam Chair, I would agree with everything that you and James have said about this. And I would like to point out that frequently the town itself parks signs on the street advising that the hydrants are being flushed, et cetera, et cetera. There's a town meeting. I believe that illuminated sign that the town uses is actually larger than three feet by three feet. And so I think this is, and I agree that for safety, people coming to visit residents need to be able to find this. Otherwise, they're going to be creeping along School Street and create another safety hazard. So I would agree with granting the waiver.
Madam Chair, if it makes, I mean, the board is going to have time and if there seems to be some disagreement, if it's helpful, we can submit all the information of a project that's under construction in Situate that shows the sign that was approved there, which is an uplift sign on a piece of granite, very attractive. Just to give the, the board a, an idea of what it is that we're contemplating. And, and it is, cars are traveling at a decent rate, as you all know, based on the traffic review. And to have a small sign, what you're going to have is not cars creeping along. You're going to have cars slowing down unnecessarily quickly because the sign comes up on them because they didn't see it from, you know, an appropriate distance. So six by six is really not that big a sign, but why, why don't I submit, you know, I can submit this week our Situate sign, just as an example, for a 60-unit project. And just to, and then the board can take it up, you know, when you revisit some of these other waivers.
That would be great. We'll defer this if that's okay with the board.
Yes.
Alan McMillan, did you have a question? You're on mute. You're on mute.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Just a suggestion, several people have mentioned, including Mr. Angler, that it's an uplift sign. Thinking about night pollution and thinking about night pollution and the fact that it's in a wooded area. Wouldn't it make more sense to have the lights pointing down? Rockport has a, and I'm Alan McMillan from Rockport, Mass. Rockport has a lighting bylaw, and we were given a tour before the zoning board passed this ordinance to see the good and the bad and the ugly with lighting, and downward-facing lights shining on the sign are much more effective and do not pollute the night sky. Just a suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. We'll wait and see what Mr. Angler provides us as a example. Okay. Sue Brown, did you have a question?
Sarah, I was just going to suggest if we could have that available for when the architectural review comes in, that might be an appropriate place to, to have, to have that discussion.
Great, thank you. We will defer number 21 because we don't have any information on the feasibility of connecting to the municipal sewer. There's a couple other conditions I thought we might be able to discuss tonight. Whether we want to consider them or not, or whether we want to think about it for a while. One of the issues that came up in the engineering is the number of truckloads of debris from blasting that's going to be shipped out of the site. When I did my calculations, I calculated that there'd be a truck, either a truck coming in empty or a truck, trunk going out full every four minutes. And I was wondering if we want to consider a condition that number one requires that they use Route 128. So we don't find out that they're going through Essex or something like that, or Manchester. And I'm wondering if we want to consider limiting the trucking hours during the school commutes for the middle and the high school.
Uh, this is Brian again. I think that's excellent as far as the, uh, the impact on the school commute. As it is, it's, it's, it's harrowing coming down from Essex. And if we can, I know that it's going to impact construction costs, Mr. Angler, but, I think 7 to 8 o'clock, uh, 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 high traffic counts versus probably 7 to 8:30.
30.
Yeah.
I've asked, um, I sent an email to the superintendent of schools asking for input on what the time window might be morning and afternoon.
I think that's, I think it's excellent. Again, uh, we want to minimize the impact on the local residents and waiting time for kids.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I, I had to take a kind of an emergency call. Let, I mean, limiting the, 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 first of all, the trucks are, I mean, everybody knows how close the site is to 128. And we would be comfortable with limiting trucks coming to and from there. But to limit the hours of deliveries and movement, that's going to elongate the process unnecessarily and make a, a process that by most accounts, people will want to complete as soon as possible much longer and we see is, is unnecessary.
Well, it wouldn't be an issue if it were, for instance, done during the summer. You know, but the, the problem is, is that's the, the main route from Essex to the middle and senior high school.
And to the elementary schools.
Well, no, because Essex and Manchester are on elementary schools.
No, but there are, there are a fair number
That's a sure school.
There's a fair number of Essex kids that in my son's class, for example, for various reasons, they need to attend Manchester.
Okay, okay, for a special ed or something.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think it's reasonable. I, 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 I appreciate, uh, the cost impacts, the structural schedule and, and construction cost. But, uh, we also have to take into consideration, uh, quality of life here in town.
Okay, well, let me get the additional information from the school as to what the hours are suggested.
Sarah?
Yes.
I had one question on this. With all these trucks that we're looking at, the amount of fill that's being removed, what's the possible damages to the road and who's responsible for that, for all that weight?
I guess we need to get input from the DPW on that. Right?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
While you're consulting with the DPW, um, this is a, a state road, I believe. And if I'm correct, there are limits to the weight of a vehicle on a state road. I can
That's not state. I mean,
School Street is not state.
No, School Street is not a state road. The state owns
The interchange.
The interchanges.
Okay.
And the, and the, the overpass.
I stand corrected then. Uh, I thought it was a state road, but, uh, thank you for correcting me. Therefore, I, I would ask that the DPW comment on the weight of a vehicle that would be acceptable on School Street between 128 and the site. Because we certainly don't want to damage, um, the street. Our streets are already in bad enough shape. So yes, thank you. And thank you for consulting with the school board, um, school committee, so that we know what would be a good timing. And we can point out that this would only apply when school was in session. So, um, I suppose that would open up Saturdays. And I would think that the, um, the contractors could stage their vehicle so that they would not, um, they could hold some of them if they were not into the right timeframe to, to accommodate some reasonable time restraints on this.
Can I, how, how, how will this be regulated exactly?
That's a very good point.
Well, I, I presume if you're going to have that much traffic, you're going to have to have police details.
Not for this, not, not for normal deliveries and, and, and leaving. Police details are more when you have, you know, lots of residential people in the nar, area, other uses, conflict of movements. We're, we're not going to have any of that here.
I'll talk to the police department. Get more information.
It's a very good point, Madam Chair. If the number of vehicles that you, that you estimate is going to be a fairly high number of vehicles, perhaps we should put in a condition that they will be police there to maintain order. It's, um, we don't know because we haven't received a plan on how they plan their plan for excavating the site, removing the stone, dirt, et cetera. So, um, I'd like to hear what the, the police might have to say and the DPW has to say on this issue. And perhaps, uh, we have to put a condition in there that police will be involved for public safety reasons.
Okay, I'll check into that.
Just a quick note on that, that posted speed limit right there, because there's a electronic sign there right now. It's 35.
Right. Two other issues I wanted to discuss a little bit. And that is the project is allowing for affordable housing at 25%, which is what's under the 40B, um, regulation. In the purchase and sale agreement, there is a unit refer, uh, reserved for the seller, uh, family of the seller, um, an affordable unit, which presumably would not be covered under the Fair Housing Act. Um, Mr. Angler, is that unit included or excluded in your 25%?
Uh, it could not be included, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Violation of
Okay. And then the other issue with respect to the affordable housing is there's usually an option that might be considered, um, by the state to have local preference for the affordable housing. Um, and that is in the initial lottery. I think it's pretty complicated, but, um,
Yeah, the way it works is the, the, technically, the local preference, the town needs to, um, demonstrate the need to mass housing. Our lottery agent will work with the town to show kind of what's customarily provided. And then the town would submit that request, uh, when the, the affirmative market, well, prior to the affirmative marketing and mass housing would review it and do course and confirm there is a need, which I'm sure there would be in Manchester, and, uh, approve it. And then the lottery agent would incorporate that as part of the affirmative marketing and application intake.
So that would be separate from the comprehensive permit?
No, it would be conditioned.
Okay.
You, you, the board and, and you can talk to your council about this, but
Okay.
the, a condition could simply say something to the extent of, and I'm paraphrasing, you know, the, the ZBA requires, uh, the applicant to, uh, include uh, a, a, a local preference category in the affirmative marketing to the greatest, uh, percentage poss, uh, percentage possible as determined by the subsidizing agency. Um, because ultimately, they're the judge, jury, and executioner, uh, on this issue, but it, it's customarily given. I, I'm sure your council has language from other permits that, uh, speaks to it.
So is that Yes, Mr. Solis.
Uh, and is that administered by, uh, the management or that the, uh, would that be Man, Manchester Housing? Who would administer that?
We would, we would administer it. But we would, we, the, we would retain a lottery agent that would, uh, administer the local preference. But there's a, before the, all the documentation are, are approved, we work with the town. The town, you know, adds, uh, if there's certain organizations you want added to the affirmative marketing, if there's other entities you want included. So you'll definitely have the opportunity to review everything, but including local preference. It used to be the Wild West. Now there's, I think, I'm speaking a little out of school here. I think there's four allowable categories. So Manchester by the Sea can't be like creating its own local preference categories beyond what's allowed. But it's, you know, residents of Manchester, um, I think, I think it's, uh, uh, employees that work in Manchester by the sea. Um, there's like four ca, I, I want to say there's four, there might be five, but you get the idea, but it's, it's all, it's all administered and done in, uh, collaboration with the town.
Okay, thank you.
So is this a condition we want to? Include?
I believe so. I think they have a problem with municipal employees unable to, uh, live in the town that they, and so anything that we can do, I, I'm all for that.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we include a condition, um, that allows local preference in the affordable housing, and we'll get the appropriate wording from town council.
Second.
Any further discussion? I'll take a vote. James?
Approved.
John?
Approved.
John?
Approved.
Brian?
Approved.
Jim?
Approved.
Catherine?
Approved.
And Sarah approves. So that is all I had for tonight. Next meeting would be June 8. And I believe that the environmental peer review will be on the docket. And then we can see if we can work with any of the waiver requests for environmental, whether that's too soon. And then the other things that won't be ready by the 8th and therefore would have to go to the 22nd is the municipal water and sewer feasibility, feasibility study review, the architecture peer review, the environmental wildlife habitat study peer review, and then conditions and waivers. If we can get to them. If not, if we don't get an extension on the public hearing, that would mean we would be discussing conditions and waivers in open meetings with no public input. Before I continue the public hearing, uh, Dan Hill, you have your hand raised.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I just had a procedural question. Um, I understand that June 8th is going to be a, a night dedicated to environmental impacts. Obviously, that's of utmost importance and concern to my clients. Um, we've been waiting, you know, everyone's been waiting for months for this wildlife study to be submitted. Um, frankly, I, I, I think that it's really going to be very difficult for the board to consider the requested waivers from the wetland bylaw without having that critical piece of evidence in from the developer. And I, I'm just wondering, can, can the board ask the developer to submit that, say, by June 1st, so that we have time, everyone has time to see that report and, and be able to make an informed uh, discussion on the 8th about the waiver requests and about the environmental impacts?
I believe, Mr. Angler, I believe you
Yeah, that, that would, that would, that date was established, uh, a while ago from the board, and that, that's our target date. And I expect to be able to submit the wildlife corridor slash fertile pool analysis study, uh, on that date. Thank you. And also, Madam Chair, we will have, uh, a response early next week to all of, uh, Mr. Bowman's, um, his, uh, written comments, as well as some additional exhibits. So that, that, those two things will be definitely submitted next week. And then, um, you heard from my civil engineer, we're working with, closely with the town and their consultants uh, on, on a lot of the technical analysis around the water and sewer. Um, so we hope to have that submitted in the next several weeks as well.
Okay. With that, I will make a motion to continue the public hearing to Wednesday, June 8th at 7:00 PM. Do I have a second?
I approve. Second, Jim?
Take a roll call vote. James? James Mitchell? You're going to vote to continue?
Approved.
John?
Please.
John?
Approved.
Brian? Jim?
Approved.
Catherine?
Approved.
And Sarah approves. Okay, we will move on to administrative matters.
I'm going to say goodnight, Sarah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you next time.
Yep. Um, we don't have any Yep. We don't have any minutes to review. Is there anything else that anybody wishes to discuss?
I'm okay, Sarah.
We understand what the rest of the schedule looks like? Okay. I will make a motion to adjourn. Take a roll call vote. James?
Approved.
John?
Approved.
John?
Approved.
Brian?
Approved.
Jim?
Approved.
Catherine?
Approved.
And Sarah approves. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thanks. Have a good night.
Yeah.